Good evening. I'd like to call this August 22nd, 2023, School Board Work Session and Close Meeting to Order. Ms. Goodell, could you please take the role?
Yes, Dr. Anderson.
Here.
Dr. Dimick.
Here.
Ms. Downs.
Here.
Dr. Gould.
Here.
Dr. Ortiz.
Here.
Ms. Silverman.
Here.
And Ms. Tice.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you could join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we're at 1.04. If I could have someone make a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Could I have a second? Thank you, Vice Chair Gould. All those in favor say yes. Yes. All those opposed say no. Thank you. Motion carries. And we are at 2.01, Review of Easements. And I will turn that over to Dr. Noonan.
Thank you, Chair Downs. And good evening, everybody, and welcome, Sean. We're glad that you're here for your first meeting. We want to, I just want to take just a moment as we kick off the meeting to just a moment of celebration, more than anything, to say that we are fully underway in our schools. We got off to a great start yesterday and another, an even better start today. We were laughing a little bit earlier, but I think it's a good metric for the first two days. All of our kids made it to school. All of our kids got lunch. All of our kids found their classes. All of our kids got home from school. And, and the feedback has been very positive from the parent community that we've, that we've had an opportunity to meet with and to hear from. Like every school year, every, every first or five days, there are a few glitches here and there that we've got to work through. And one of the things that we continue to work through are on some balancing of classes, balancing of busloads. Bus, we still are making a few adjustments to some of the bus routes to balance those loads. And part of the reason for that, and I just want to sort of put it on your radar early, I don't have any analysis of it. I don't have anything that I can share beyond this tonight, is that currently we are 93 students. We have 93 more students than we had at the end of last year, at the start of this year. And we're currently 75 students over projections from what we projected and built our schedule on and budgeted for from last year. So obviously, that will require some digging and some looking to see where those students are coming from. And then as the budget time rolls around and we look at all the information that we have from Weldon Cooper, from our demographer that we're finalizing now, and the like, we'll be able to have a better sense of where that's, where it's coming from. But I do think it's an important sort of note, a footnote maybe, to kind of pay attention to, or even maybe a harbinger of things to come. So we'll see kind of where we land. But all that to say, really great start. The vibe in the schools has been super positive. Really enjoyed all my time yesterday in all the schools and today in all the schools, and look forward to a great year. So with that, I want to thank Jeremy Root, our outside counsel, for being here this evening. He and Tricia Minson are outstanding internal counsel, are going to walk us through sort of where we are in terms of easements that are coming your way for review and adoption in the next couple of weeks. So, Ms. Minson.
I'll dive in with a quick preview. Thank you. We had three easements that we talked about during the school board meeting earlier this month, where HIT, Rushmark joined. We have another easement for Cox. This comes to us from Hoffman Developers. And I'm very grateful for Jeremy Root joining us because he is the expert in land law. So that's, I guess, the introduction, and all the other questions and the hard things can be directed to Mr. Root.
Ladies and gentlemen of board, thank you for the invite to come tonight. It's been a couple of years, actually, since I was last before you all. We were involved pretty heavily as part of the new high school with all the construction and the swapping of parcels and everything that took place with that. One of the big pieces of that puzzle was actually the re-subdivision of the various parcels that were located at the location of the old high school and now the new one. And as a result of that re-subdivision, the parcel that the high school currently sits on is, has an odd shape. I don't know if you've seen it or looked at it on a map, but there is a stretch of that parcel that goes up alongside the northern edge, which would be where Mustang Alley is located. And then there's a thin strip of land that comes down alongside Haycock Road. And so there were a variety of reasons why the parcels were developed in that way. But as a result, you will have a number of different parties that will keep coming to you over time, asking for permission to, to put easements or make modifications to the land in those, those specific strips of land. So I think you have before you four different easements that are being proposed. This is just a work session, and you know, these easements are currently a work in progress right now. We have made some proposals to the other side to make certain edits to those easements. But we wanted them to be before you because they're getting pretty close. We're getting to the point where if we can reach a final version of these, we want the, the chair to have the authority to go ahead and sign the easement. So you know, you'll be voting on that at a future, you know, session of the board. But tonight is an opportunity for you to just hear at least a 30,000-foot level of what it is that's being proposed. So there's four main easements. Simple easement is one with Cox Communication. That's a, a small 10-foot easement that, that is located in one of those strips of land. Then there's also an easement with Fairfax County Water Authority. That's, these are all very common easements that are located whenever you have any sort of new development that takes place. Okay? So the real crux of the matter, and this is what I think you all first heard about maybe a week or two ago, were the easements that were affiliated or related to the, the solar panels that are going to go up over the top of the Rushmark HIT building. Okay? So this easement is being referred to by the parties as the aerial easement. Okay? And that aerial easement is for a, a thin strip of land. It, it begins, I think, 75 feet above the ground and then extends for another 30 feet in the air and then ends, you know? So presumably, your aerial, you know, your, your rights to the land would continue after that 130-foot level. But the idea there is that Rushmark needs the ability to hang that solar panel over school board-owned land. So the land, just to reiterate, make it clear, and you'll see it in the plats that are part of your, I think they're on blackboard. You'd see it in the plats, you know, when you take a look at it, but it's, it's part of the Mustang Alley strip of land, for lack of a better way of describing that, that thin strip. Okay? Now, as part of the negotiations with HIT and Rushmark, one of the things that, that Dr. Noonan really kind of spearheaded was to, to go back to Rushmark and say, is there a, a way that you can give us maybe a quid pro quo for offering this aerial easement? And what Rushmark was willing to do was to, to offer a no-build easement on the western edge of their parcel. So their parcel is located immediately to the north of Mustang Alley. It's actually on Fairfax County land, right? And the idea there is that they, they could have built their entire solar panel array on top of their, their parcel of land, but it would have brought the solar panel close to the high school. And so by building this no-build area easement, by, by putting the no-build easement into their, this package, we're giving them that narrow strip on Mustang Alley, but it, it creates, I think, probably a, a more aesthetic approach to the overall, you know, solar array that they're trying to put forward. So in addition to that aerial easement, there's a couple of other standard easements that are located. You know, private roadway easements for a couple driveways that have boom arms that come down for deliveries, that kind of thing. There's also some easements in there that are related to storm sewer provision. And so in order to build on those easements, they then, the final set of easements that you see are the, the temporary construction easements. And you know, you've seen those with other projects that, that you have had come before you. Those temporary easements only last as long as the construction takes place. And a number of them are, you have surface, but then you also have subsurface. Because in order to dig down and to create the, the foundation for the new building, they have to do, you know, tiebacks and other sorts of things that require them to, to go underneath the surface of the ground. So that's it in a nutshell. From my perspective as a land use attorney, you know, real estate attorney, most of these easements are pretty plain vanilla. It's what you normally would see with any sort of large development that's happening. Oftentimes, you have to go offsite to a neighboring, you know, owner, landowner in order to get an easement. What's unusual here is the aerial easement. You know, that's, that's unusual. And you know, it's, it's part and parcel to, you know, the design that HIT has adopted here and their desire to be a, a net-zero energy, you know, building. But in order to do that, they're now asking the school board to grant them that narrow strip along Mustang Alley so that they can keep a, what they deem, and what I think, what they were able to show at their last meeting was probably a slightly better design. So I, I guess with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Can I, can I just add? I just want to say thanks to Jeremy for coming. You know, the board did sort of look at these, that particular easement at our last meeting. And so that's sort of why we're bringing it back tonight is just to make sure you're fully comfortable with it. Because Jeremy, along with the counsel from the, the parcel next to us, are starting to draft those easements. And of course, those will come to you. So I just want to, that's part of the reason that he's here. But I think, I think there's comfort moving forward with that, but I think we got that last time. But any questions that you all may have about the other easements probably are on the table, too.
So just for those who might be, not, maybe there's hundreds of people watching us tonight. But, but there were those who are watching us who didn't watch last time. And so Ms. Minson and Jeremy, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we were not to grant the easement, so the easement's going to let them go over Mustang Alley, if we were not to grant that easement, then they would bump it up closer to the football field. Is that right?
They would move the entire building structure closer to the football field. That's correct.
Okay. So we're basically sort of allow, by doing this, and that was a great idea for Dr. Noonan, is to have that no-build easement, we're having some breathing room on that side. And in exchange, we'll have more of an overhang over the pedestrian walkway along Mustang Alley. Is that correct?
That's right. And that, the same easement that would grant the aerial easement also is private maintenance of that road. So they are going to do a lot of improvements of that walking pedestrian path along Mustang Alley. So that's another give that they wanted to.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Minson. Any questions or comments? Yes, Dr. Dimick.
Thanks very much. Could you remind me, this came up last time, how, when does the easement end? Does it end?
Yep. Thank you for that. I should have mentioned that earlier. This is a perpetual easement. It does not end. But the language in the document, and we, we pushed them to include it, is that at any point that they redevelop the building or demolish the HIT building, that the, the aerial easement would terminate automatically.
So this is going to be HIT's headquarters, and so I think they have an incentive to keep it being beautiful. What happens if they decide to move their headquarters somewhere and they sell this building to someone who perhaps doesn't keep it up so well? Like the, the beautiful, the drawings are beautiful, but you know, as time passes and it ages and if it changes owners, like there, it, so this just says until it's demolished. So they could sell this to someone. And what if the next person doesn't keep up their due diligence with this giant overhang that is, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. But it's also in the nature of easement law that what you would be doing is granting them the right to use that portion of Mustang Alley, you know? And like any easement, once that's granted, there's really not a whole lot more that can be done. So even at this stage, it would be unusual to have a covenant or something else in an easement that would require a certain level of maintenance. And I don't even know exactly how that would look. So I think the short answer to your question is that it's a neighboring parcel. You know, just as if you had a neighbor that failed to, to keep up their, their property, you would have the same remedies, you know, to that neighbor as you would with these folks.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Dr. Ortiz.
I missed the minute a couple of weeks ago, so I'm sorry. And I stared at these, these documents then and then got confused and put them aside until now. But the question I have is this, is that this is an easement over Mustang Alley. You know, that's used by students quite often to get to and from school. And you know, I, you know, I don't see, you know, I see like, you know, the particulars about, you know, this easement. This is the granting that we have, and that's all kind of pro forma. But you know, the fact of the matter is, is that our students use this all the time. And so you know, what we, I want to make sure that maintenance and other activities thereof didn't interfere with the use, the kind of the general use of that area. And so what provisions are available in order to make, you know, in order to ensure that there's some coordination, you know, understanding that they would need to maintain the facility and whatnot, some coordination thereby so that we could avoid any kind of disruption. Because we've seen quite a bit of disruption, and now we're almost through it, which is great, but we want to make sure that we're permanently through it. So, so could you help me answer that? And if this has been answered, I'm so sorry and, you know.
Yeah, I, I believe that the easement documents, especially for the private roadway and maintenance of the sidewalk along through there, does have language that requires them to coordinate with the school board on doing any sort of significant improvement projects along through there. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look. And if I have further questions, I'll send those to Trish, and we can send this along. Okay?
Okay.
That'd be great.
It, it does raise an interesting question. And this is where sometimes I get lost in some of these details. And if I'm telling you something that is so blatantly obvious that it's not worth reminding the board, I apologize. But the property itself that we're talking about actually is in Fairfax County. So any landscaping that happens along their property line on the inside, if they wanted to do anything with that that at all interfered with our operations, we certainly could ask them to leave our property immediately because it's not, they wouldn't be allowed to do their maintenance from our side of the, of the line. With respect to, as Jeremy said, you know, the areas of property that we have easements on that are in our, in our current property area, we, we definitely have those, those things addressed that you've, you've raised. I think the one thing we probably need to coordinate, Jeremy, and maybe this is just a conversation for you and the attorney, too, would be, you know, in the event that there was ever a need to do something with that portion of the canopy that's in our aerial easement, how we would coordinate, you know, taking care of that or, or whatever.
Yes, Dr. Anderson.
Yeah, so I don't know how much of this would be related to the easement per se or just to the construction, but I'm just wondering how the construction, and particularly like granting this easement to have it overhang the Mustang Alley a little bit, is going to affect the use of Mustang Alley at some point. Just wondering how, what, just kind of forecasting the potential future disruption for the community.
Yeah, I, I really don't think it will have any impact. Once it's built, I don't think it'll have any impact at all. I mean, obviously, it's 75 feet plus in the air. It's the, the construction itself probably that would cause the greatest impacts on the area. And again, as part of the temporary construction easement, they're required to coordinate with the school board.
I, I did have a conversation with Mr. HIT and another person on his team about that specifically. And the, obviously, the crane placement that they're going to put up won't be on our property. And so that alone will kind of keep, I think, a lot of the traffic out of our Mustang Alley because they'll be building it from the other side, which I think is really good. And, and they're not going to swing it. As I understand it, they wouldn't swing their crane over a Mustang Alley either. The only thing that potentially could be close to our property would be, and this is a term I, I just learned. It's, I think it's called weather vaneing. So, and you all may know what this means. I didn't know what it meant. But in weather vaneing, it just means that they let the, they let the crane sort of go with the wind when it's not being used. Because if it got too much wind, there's a potential for collapse or whatever. So it could weather vane over our property, but it wouldn't be specifically used over our property without some sort of safety protocol and, and the like.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Helpful. Okay, well, I think that's, that's it for this evening. This is just an informational presentation this evening, and we'll be voting on this next meeting. Is that right, Ms. Minson?
I expect we'll have at least three of the easements, if not all four, ready for the September board meeting. Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. So if anyone I know, Dr. Ortiz, you said you might have some questions, just try to get those, everyone get those into Ms. Minson so that she can have time to, her plate is full, so she can have time to answer those.
Great, thank you. And thank you for joining us, Jeremy.
Yes, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay. Before we move on to the next agenda item, Dr. Noonan, I wanted to do a quick backup to your comments about opening. And you were, I'm going to be more direct than you were, but is there a way we could get the population that's attending schools from Founders Row? Because I know that last time, when we talked during budget, I know we, the, the idea was that they were on projection for what city council had said, but there was still a decent amount of vacancies. So I'd like to see if that's okay, if you could get us that information at some point.
Sure. I can, I can look into getting it. I do know that there is a portion of Founders Row that's been reserved until the, some of the other requirements of Founders Row are done. For example, the movie theater and some other things. So at this point, it's as full as it's going to be.
Okay.
But I, I certainly can take a look.
Okay.
And then forecast a little bit about what Founders Row 2 might do as well.
Right. Because if the, you know, if, so I know city council is obviously, understands our concerns about enrollment jumping up. But if the formula that's being used isn't working, we, it's fair for us to know that sooner rather than later.
Sure. We can look into it.
Great, thank you. Okay, so moving on, and again, I didn't give a, thank you for Dr. Noonan for saying hi to Sean. I didn't give you a proper acknowledgement. Hi. This is Mr. Sean Lewin, joining us this evening as our student board rep. So welcome. We hope you had a good summer. So happy to have you. And feel free to jump in at any time. Don't wait for me to call. You just, all right, you might need to flag my, you know, get my attention. But feel free to jump in at any time. Okay, so we're going to move on now to section 2.02. It's, we're going to have a presentation on safety, security, and student behavior. And I'll turn that back over to Dr. Noonan.
Yes, thanks again, Board Chair Downs. Appreciate that. And thank you to Ms. Tice for sort of pushing us. There was a request at the end of last year to do another annual sort of update on student safety and security. And so we will put this in the queue, just so you know that for each year going forward, we'll do some sort of update at the beginning of the year for the board on school safety and security. This time, we did add a little bit of information about student behavior because that is something that we saw an increase in last year, where some of those pieces of behavior that we were concerned about. And so Mr. Bates will do that portion as he is on, on the ground working with the administrators from schools. But we have the great Brian Fowler this evening with us, who will do the, the portion on safety and security. And then we'll turn it over to Mr. Bates, Dr. Bates, excuse me, for the student behavior portion of the, of the presentation. So, Mr. Fowler, take us away.
I get the lovely opportunity to steal just a moment from Mr. Fowler first. And I just want to point out, safety and security really is a, a true collaboration. This summer, we were incredibly fortunate to have just tremendous dedication from all of our school leaders, working with central office leaders, to really look at the safety and security things that we do in our schools and our buildings, what our documentation is, what our training was for staff. And through a collaborative process, we've made significant improvements this year. So I really wanted to take the opportunity to thank those school leaders, particularly Valerie Hardy, for that work because that's, that's how we got here tonight, and together we're truly better. So this evening, Brian Fowler's going to talk a lot about the physical security measures that we have in place. I also wanted to point out that in the past, Rebecca Sharp has shared a lot of the work that we do in terms of social, emotional support for students. And that's not part of the presentation this evening. But we really wanted to point out that that really is critical and, and fundamental to the things that we do in terms of supporting our students and staff. So I'm going to turn it over to Brian for the physical security measures.
First off, I'm going to say thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be able to present this to you. Some of the physical features that we have that would be more exterior would be, we have a limited entry with main doors that are on the front of our buildings so that we have increased visibility at all times. We're able to have Securitas monitoring the main entrances. We're lucky to have the access control so we're, we have the ability to turn that off in an instant if we need to get in place of keys in case we needed to not, if someone had lost something or misplaced it. The, we have external cameras outside, lots of lighting. We have all three of your main alarm systems, burglar, emergency, and fire. Last year, we started conducting towards the middle of the year, exterior door checks completed by the maintenance staff every week to make sure that the exterior doors are closed under their own power. Some of our interior things, we have, all the main entrances are monitored by Securitas. We do have two school resource officers who serve all schools but are based at our secondary campus. There's a lot more emphasis this year on them visiting our elementary schools every week. We have security cameras throughout the inside. We do visitor screening. Classroom doors remain locked. We cover the classroom doors and interior windows in case of an emergency. And we have provided crisis bags for all classrooms, including stop-the-bleed kits in every bag. So security is really everyone's responsibility. We've asked that staff report visitors to the main office if they see someone without a badge. You do want to still foster a sense of everyone belonging in our buildings, you know, and make sure everyone feels it's a good environment. All of our parking spots are on school grounds. We now have tags. We make sure we monitor who's parking where. All the visitors have to go through our main front doors so that we can screen them and check them in. And it has been told to school employees, no one enters, even if we know the person unless they have the badge on. That's really stressed this year. So we've also really stressed on propping doors. No exterior doors are to be propped by staff or students, no matter what they're doing, before school, after school, or during the instructional day. The only exception would be is during arrival and dismissal, if their staff appointed someone to stay at the open doors as we're getting kids in and out. Employees cannot just open the door to let someone enter the building. And if they don't have a, they have to report if they don't have a badge. And we do say it's kind of back to the see something, say something. If you see something that seems unusual, please report it. Every year, we do conduct, conduct the Virginia School Safety Audit, which includes the crisis management plans and the climate and working conditions, and the school safety inspection checklist. In terms of emergency communications, internally, we have our public address systems in the building. We do use two-way radios. We do have a very expanded coverage, thanks to having some repeaters. We use a third-party application for some secure messaging. And more school-based, we use Schoology, Class Tag, and email in order to get to students and teachers within the building. Externally, we use social media, the same principles with the Class Tag, text message, email. And we do have a partnership with the Falls Church City really well, that they, they put out anything that needs to be put out. So in terms of preparing for these emergencies, every year, we conduct all the main drills, fire evacuation, tornado, earthquake, lockdown, and we do school bus evacuations. So this year, I went with the, we've partnered with the city management, Joe Carter, the emergency manager, and the police department. The police department has now started using the same language of I Love You Guys Foundation. That way, the language is all the same when they come to our buildings, and we can use that language throughout all of our buildings. It's very detailed, has a common language that can start at pre-K, has all the videos to actually share with parents and students. That's very friendly. And all the words stay the same from pre-K through high school. So this here is an overview of the parent communication. We do notify all the parents before, in advance of lockdown drills. And there's now a video that has been supplied by I Love You Guys. It's very well, good to share and very transparent with what we're actually doing. So this is Officer Chuk and Officer Fallon. They're our two school resource officers. They've become very good in like collaborating with the students throughout, all the students feel safe. They feel like they can talk to them at any time. They're included in all of our debriefs and any kind of meetings we have in security. So as I said, we've, we've worked really hard with Joe Carter, the emergency management guy, and, and the entire police department to understand how our buildings work. We partnered where they can, their badge access works 365, seven days a week. In case of an emergency, they can enter any of our buildings at any time. And they are, because of the I Love You Guys Foundation, they're using the same language we would use in the school with staff and students so that there's no confusion throughout. So thanks to our big development that is going on next to the high school, there's been some questions regarding some of the security around that, with most emphasis on the hotel. If you look at this diagram, our trapezoid lot, I don't have If you look at this diagram, our trapezoid lot, I don't have a way to point to it or anything, oh, somebody does. Okay, so our trapezoid lot is there on the kind of left-hand corner, and the parking garage is kind of a buffer in between the hotel, hotel is really not in plain view of our campus, but we will work, as we learn things about how that development is going to work, we will definitely take measures to keep everyone safe. So that kind of does it for me, I believe Mr. Bates is going to take over from here.
If we can just take some questions, I'm assuming I'm going to ask a question that probably all of us, does anyone have, could give us a little information on the I Love You Guys Foundation? I was just looking it up on my phone, I should have looked it up earlier today, but it looks like it was a sort of partnership between school administrators and law enforcement on ways to deal with.
So it was actually a father that lost his daughter in a school shooting, and that it's been his like, like life work to make a better partnership and to do it, and I went to the training, the state of Virginia started to adopt the whole thing within schools and government buildings, and so it's just a very plain-to-the-point, common language that's good for everyone, very transparent, and shows the language that would like hold people in a building where you would, like it uses language like hold, where you would still do business as usual, but kind of stay inside, shelter would mean stay inside, no one comes in, you know, just different terms.
Yes, Ms. Silverman.
Thank you for this presentation, could we get an update on Oak Street, especially for those who are watching, I know there's some really important safety issues that the, the construction is aiming to address, and just a little bit of the background of that and the timing of when we think completion might be.
So, the front entrance of Oak Street is actually the safest entrance at the moment, since it has no stairs for anyone to get in, but we're working on it. So what we did is I asked Securitas, we use the gym entrance kind of the main entrance for children, and the rear entrance, we do want to still keep our cameras visual, so the Securitas officer does have to make, both of them are kind of making rounds right now, but we want to keep one stationed kind of by the gym doors and one by the back door, but we want them on patrol most of the time, and still monitoring the camera, so it is kind of tricky right now, that's why we're trying to hope to get these stairs within the next week or, week and a half, but that's what we're doing currently, is having a Securitas.
Can you talk about the secure vestibule as well?
Oh yeah, so, anyone who's been in Oak Street remembers we had that, you know, you came in, it was a real tight, we removed the wall, as you came in on the right, we opened that up, it was kind of a file room, we opened it up, the security officer will now be placed in that space, you will have a door in front of you that you can be buzzed in, it's locked with the badge, same as in going into the office, he will have sight to outside and be able to buzz people and check them in within this area before they even get to the office now, so much better.
Do we have a timing on completion on that?
So we're looking at the stairs, they're, they're pouring concrete within the day or so, we should be able to start using those, you know, right around the first, and then soon thereafter, so we're about two, probably two and a half weeks away from getting everything together.
And permitting is good?
Finally, yes.
Great, and I just want to, I, I'm very impressed with the timing of this, because I know that things were very delayed because of permitting, so the fact that this actually has a close date of possibly early September, I think is just like a really fantastic thing.
Yeah, they were performing all work they could do without a permit to be ready for the moment we had the permit, so.
Yes, Ms. Tice.
Thank you so much, as Dr. Noonan said, I, I was really hoping that we'd be able to get this in the annual, annual update, and this is fantastic, so thank you so much for all of the information, just some small questions, and also partly for us and partly for anyone watching, can you just review the difference between the Securitas guards versus the SRO and versus a police officer, and like what the difference in those terms and roles are?
So the SRO, all of our Securitas guards were taken to training last year to be school security officers, so they carry no any kind, you know, they don't even carry mace or anything like that, they're not to engage with any students in a physical manner, the school resource officer has a little bit more, you know, realm that he can, they can function in, and they, the Securitas officers are supposed to, every instant are supposed to contact the SRO at any engagement with student.
And the SRO is a member of the.
Of the police department, yes.
They're just, they just spend their days in our schools.
Yep, they're with us now.
They're employees of the city through the police department.
Yeah.
And, and they are armed, right?
Yes, they are armed.
Yes.
Yeah, this year, we're, we're putting a little more emphasis on making, having them go to the elementary schools, just because I think it's important for anyone in the community to see them out and about, so with security, like seeing, seeing is like half of the deterrent, if not more, so seeing the, the car around, we have them park at different places every couple of days to make sure they see that the car's moving, and we want them to have a relationship with the children at a young age coming up, so that everybody's feeling good.
Well, you seem to have fantastic people in those roles right now.
Yes.
Who do such a great job connecting with students, and, and so that, we're very fortunate.
I think, can I, I think Dr. Noonan wanted to jump in?
Can I just add too, just to, just to let the board and the community also know that we have a recently revised memorandum of understanding between the school system and the police department, that very clearly defines what the roles of each organizations are, so that we can separate duties, because one of the things that we want to make sure of is one, that our, our, our school resource officers build great relationships with the kids, but being a school resource officer is very different than being, for example, a beat cop or on the street, and as a consequence of that, our rules sort of supersede in many ways what police officers might normally do, our administrators run the schools, they run point on things that are disciplinary, et cetera, that's not for the police to be involved in, if there is an illegal action that's taken, we work very closely with the police and will involve the SRO, but it's always at our, our lead, unless there's imminent danger or threat, so I just want to make sure that you all know that, and maybe, maybe it would be helpful if we shared that with you in the Friday update coming up too, to put the memorandum in there, so you can just read the delineation of duties, because I know that there have been some concerns in communities across the country about having school resource officers in buildings, but this is a very unique circumstance because of the size of our city, the quality of the two people that are there, and the incredible memorandum of understanding that we really spent a lot of time hammering out, so I just want to make sure that you all knew that as well, that we've got a strong MOU.
That's actually really helpful, so I appreciate that and all the work that, that's been done, I feel like, again, we're, we're fortunate to be able to have that kind of relationship with the city as well. Also, I just had a question about where the lines are drawn on security on campus after hours, and sort of how the responsibilities and the approach to security shifts outside of school hours, since I know our, especially our secondary campus is, you know, a community space, it was built and, built and built for that, so.
So we do keep Securitas officers at the opening of, at the main entry of Mary Ellen Henderson and at Meridian in the evening, through our community youth services at night. This year, we began sharing with them, they have a login so they can see what activities are going on in the school at night, so we can be a little more proactive with, if someone looks like they belong or doesn't belong, or they can at least engage with them to ask them what event they are here for, so, and I believe the building administration has like worked to come up with a plan to like limit people going to other floors.
Not only that, but they also have put in place some timelines that are important for parents to understand, that if your student is not in an activity or an athletic programs after school, they need to go home, and if they, if they do stay for tutoring or for something else, there are some very defined hours by which they need to leave, and, and at that point, the safety and security and the supervision of students in many ways ceases, because our staff is on campus during contract hours, that's why we're asking for our parents to engage with their kids and say, you know, if you're not there with a teacher, or you're not there with a coach, you need to come home, because otherwise, you're not going to be supervised, so we will be continuing, not continuing, but starting to, I guess, and continuing, since the last two days of sweeping schools at a certain point during the day to get kids moving along and on home.
Great, that makes, that makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate the messaging that has gone out already about the, the updated approach to that, and I think it's one of those things that if we can just continue, you know, sometimes parents need to be told more than once, in a more than one way, as you all know, and I'm thinking about, you know, the football games this Friday night, and making sure that, you know, those things are clear in terms of what the parent, you know, expectation from the community is, I think that the clearer we can be with the community and asking for their help, you know, the better we all would be. And my last question was just, with, with the lockdown drills that, that we've been implementing, what sort of framework or what's the, I know the best practices are constantly evolving on the best way to approach those, so what kind of formula or curriculum do we use for that? I know it changes age appropriate as you go through, but.
Yeah, so at the secondary campus, it's, we'll be sharing the information with the parents ahead of time, it'll be just kind of like a dry run, we actually reprogrammed the language that's set over the PA system while the lockdown's in process to be a little more friendly, and the principals at each school have like come up with how they're going to handle like age appropriateness, and we've just worked with the police department and emergency management on what the best practice is.
And, and right now, we're using run, hide, fight, sort of the, or the, the framework, I'm sorry, I love you man, or I love you guys, but it's, it's similar to like, it's, it's a similar framework to when do you, when you can leave, you do leave, when you need to lock down and hide, you do, but, but we'll share some more information about that.
So that I Love You Guys also gives curriculum or whatever the word would be for, for how to structure the lockdown drills?
Yes, so if you, we can take a look at what's up on the screen there, as you see, it says like hold, that means you'd stay in your room and everything, and would be just clear the hallways, everything's business as usual, those are the five main terms that are used during I Love You Guys, so in each one, it steps up with what actually is procedurally happening, so it doesn't really get to, you know, if we say lockdown, it means get in there, no one comes in from outside, everyone stays where they are, secure would be like get into your space, but we're still kind of going business as usual, evacuate would mean get out if you, if you have the opportunity to, and the shelter one's more for like something hazardous happening, you know, like if there was some kind of chemical warfare or something happening outside the school.
And the principals are the one who structured, who structure and work with the staff on, on how the.
Yes, we've been, like, we've, we've been very diligent about this whole plan this year, and everyone's, all the teachers are very excited about it, all the students seem very comfortable with it, we, and it's part of our Safe Schools training.
I'd also like to add that during the convocation day, at the end of convocation, everybody picked up their lunch, and every person in the system was provided a mandatory training around the safety and security as well.
That's great, thank you so much, is there a video for the elementary parents or just for the secondary parents, it said on the screen just for the secondary parents?
I don't know, did we include every video?
No, so we, there's a great video for secondary that we're going to share with parents, I think the videos for the kids, I, I think ultimately, we decided we had concerns in terms of sharing those videos, so I think we'll stick with the secondary video that will be shared with students, has been shared with all of our staff, and will also be shared with parents prior to the lockdown drill.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tice, any questions, yes, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you so much for the presentation, and especially with the schematic of the West Falls development, I know that it's going to be getting more populated as the construction ends and people start moving to there, and I appreciate you adding that, because that was at my request, so very much thankful, you know, it's, a few secondary students have mentioned that they're somewhat anxious over the hotel there, and, you know, I'm a parent of, you know, elementary kids, so not really quite sure, you know, what their concerns are, though I'm sure they're there, and I think it's kind of probably a general, it would, it would be generally related to kind of more activity going on, and I assume would also be impacted by the residential areas as well, and so I'm just wondering if, do you, what kind of, kind of security issues do you foresee as that area gets more populated?
So obviously, there's going to be a lot more foot traffic, there'll just be a lot more people in general, and I can't, I can't foresee the future of like what we're actually going to be up against, but I do know that like we pay attention every day to any kind of changes we should make, and this one would be no different, the police department has already started thinking about, like, I had asked if they could put a substation in there, I thought that would have been a good idea, and they did as well, but it didn't kind of work out, but, you know, I mean, I rest assured, as long as I'm here, we're going to constantly like be paying attention, and we'll come up with whatever the back, best practice is at that time, I can't speak for like what it actually will be, because it's not there yet, unless someone knows something I don't, but like we've done some stuff with student parking, like students all now have to come out in front of the school, so we can keep an eye on all the students at all times, we do have currently Securitas patrols all of our spaces outside, constant, we have one that's just for patrolling, so that would kind of be the main thing we would maintain to do. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, any other questions?
I think to piggyback on Dr. Anderson's point, it might be, you know, Dr. Noonan, as this, all of these different buildings come online, it might be a good idea to talk to city government, you know, is there something we could go in half with them on a patrolling officer who's literally walking that, you know, whole lot, I don't, I mean, this is not for a couple of years yet, when, when everything comes online, but I think it's definitely worth, to Dr. Anderson's point, a discussion with city council to see how that whole development can be, you know, patrolled. I do have a quick question, I know during, when we had that false alarm lockdown at Meridian, one of the big hiccups we found was that there was no, the PA systems weren't connected, have we been able to fix that?
So.
Between, I'm sorry, between MEH and Meridian.
Correct, so today, it was discussed, the two operating systems we have now currently, am I allowed to get deep into it? Okay. Basically, the systems we have now are antiquated, believe it or not, we put them in four years ago, it's already, it's unsupported, and we have one tech support guy in the whole country, it's, it's not in our best interest to go with what the two are, I asked for a proposal on what the most upgraded is, it's a cloud-based PA system, so you could actually make the announcements through your phone, any part of the building, we can link the two buildings together, and like if you were in a closet, you would be able to make an announcement, you could pick which, if it's just one school, both schools, so I hope to have the proposal within a week, so.
That'd be great.
Yeah, but we, we're going to have to do it.
Right, no, that makes total sense, because.
Yeah, believe it or not, it's very, it's been very hard trying to get people to do certain things, like vendors, so, and once I found out today, it's not even a, like these two are just not going to do it, so we're going to have to upgrade it.
And that would be for both buildings?
Yes.
For, yeah.
Yes, the good thing is, it's still a hardwired-based system, all our speakers, all our low voltage stuff would stay in place, and it's basically just changing out panels in the closet.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah, so it can be done, and he said it could be done in two days.
Wow, that's great, Ms. Michael's got to find, figure out how to pay for it, but.
She always does for me.
It sounds great, and then the only other thing I wanted to say was just a shout out, I say this every year, but to Securitas, I just continue, you know, that, those are positions that could, could have a lot of turnover, and they don't, you know, and so they, you know, Mr. Brian's been there for however many years at Mount Daniel, James, who we call Ship at, at the high school, Charlie is new at MEH, but he's been making friends, introducing himself there, and I think that's such a big point, part of having a good security guard is knowing people that are coming in and out, you know, and so they're just really, I feel like they're just such a part of the community, and it's just so nice, I think reassuring to parents to see the same people there year after year, so.
Yeah, they've done a great job building trust.
They really have, I mean, I just could not be more pleased with Securitas, so I just wanted to give that shout out. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Okay, and I know we're not done with our presentation, we're turning it over to Dr. Bates, is that correct?
Yes, thank you, and so before we jump into student behavior, I think it's important that we highlight the fact that our students do have rights, but with those rights come responsibilities, and so we'll take a quick look at some of the students' rights, and this isn't an exhaustive list, but we did want to highlight some of the, the rights that our students have, our students have a right to access learning environments, educational materials, and extracurricular activities, they also have a right, as Kristin Michael had shared, they have a right to social emotional support, in addition to academic and educational support, our students have a right to, to their needs being met socially and emotionally. They have a right to environments, whether it's in the classroom, or whether it's outside of the classroom, cafeterias, on our athletics, athletic fields, but environments that hold them to high expectations, but that are also responsive and, and caring, they have a right to access those environments and be welcomed into those environments regardless of their background or identity, faith, or ability level, it's important for our students to, to know that, they have a right to receive support to ensure safe and equitable access to all.
They have a right to receive support to ensure safe and equitable access to all of the school division facilities and activities, so just kinda reinforcing that. They also have a right to opt out. If there are things that either students or their parents may feel that they don't want to share, or that the student may be uncomfortable, they know that they have a right to exercise that option. And so, again, we wanted to be able to highlight some of those rights that our students have, and continue to reinforce through our schools, conversations, our flex times, or our responsive classroom, or morning meeting times, that students know that they have the right to exercise their opinions and rights. They also have responsibilities, and with that, it was shared earlier that we have a shared responsibility to keep our campuses safe, to keep our schools safe. And so our students bear part of that responsibility, so it's important for them to understand that. We talked about if you see something, say something. It's really important that if a student has some information that something could happen, or they have information or details on something that may have happened, we want them to be able to feel safe and secure and confident in communicating that to a responsible adult, whether it's a counselor, whether it's their teacher, or whether it's a parent, and then the parent would in turn share that with the school. What we found oftentimes is that when something does happen, whenever we're, our schools are doing the investigative work, that oftentimes it's, it's not just contained to two individual students or one student, that we find that in some cases, a number of students were aware, but they just either didn't think that something was gonna happen, or they just didn't think that it was a big deal, and so we wanna make sure that they remember that they do have a responsibility to communicate with us and help us to prevent some of those things that could happen. They have a responsibility to follow rules and procedures. Again, student behavior helps us to maintain safe environments, safe and orderly environments, and so we always wanna communicate with our students and have them remember and help them to remember that they are in part responsible for helping us to maintain safe and orderly environments, and helping our daily operations, school operations, run smoothly. Respecting authority and following the rules, also using words, we included that in there. Any words, or images, or gestures that are not obscene, violence, or disruptive, or disrespectful. Students also have a responsibility to treat each other with respect, treat staff with respect and dignity, and bullying is not something that is tolerated, and we want them to know that, and, but also remember that they have a responsibility to help us prevent bullying from occurring. We do take proactive approaches to supporting student behavior, and so some of the things that you see listed here are familiar to you. We wanted to list them because the purpose and intent for many of these programs is to support positive approaches to student behavior, and so whether it's restorative practices after an incident has happened and someone may have been offended, or whether it's responsive classrooms, we don't have morning meetings there, but I had mentioned that a little earlier. We wanna look for those opportunities where we can help to teach proper behavior and help students learn about proper behavior, because behavior is taught and learned. Trauma and foreign care, also parental involvement, we wanna be able to partner with our parents so that they have an understanding of what's happening in our schools and things that their students may be involved in or subjected to. And then those interventions, sometimes we need increased support, some students may need increased support, and so we have behavior specialists who support student behaviors through behavior intervention strategies, and then also our counselor psychologists and social workers, in some cases, may work with students who are in greater need of support for their behaviors. We also have community resources for supporting our students. There may be times where we have to look or expand the support beyond that of the school, beyond that of the teachers, or those aforementioned titles, the psychologists and social workers, and we have to look beyond, what is it that we're able to offer or not offer at the school level? And so we have some things listed there, such as our community services board, or our comprehensive service agency, mental health resources, and collaborating with individual service providers, and then again partnering with, with our parents. This, oftentimes, this is referred to those like wraparound services or community services that we may need to provide to students who may be a little more involved and again require support that goes above and beyond what we're able to offer at the school. When we, we talk about behaviors, we have expectations for, expectations for staff at varying levels, and so we listed out here some of the behaviors that we might see in a classroom, that might be at a lower level that we would expect our teachers to handle, so we're calling those, those teacher managed behaviors, and then the next slide talks a little bit about our administrative managed behaviors. So, oh, we can, we can go back. So some of the things we have listed here are defiance and disrespect, and that could include noncompliant behavior, disrupting the classroom, and that could be anything from talking to not being engaged or pulling other students away from their engagement in the learning. Students using inappropriate language, this could be making inappropriate comments to another student, or just voicing an inappropriate comment out loud, again, something that might pull the learning, the instruction off track, or take away from other students' engagement in the learning. We also looked at physical contact and aggression. This includes disregarding personal space, or horseplay, roughhousing, things of that nature. We also have physical aggression or fighting, on the next slide, we can talk about that. Those are the things that would be a little more serious, as opposed to physical contact or aggression that's happening in the classroom that the teacher, teacher could very well handle. Violating technology use, not using your device properly, not, again, when we're thinking about teaching and learning and students being engaged in that process, a student maybe not being on task, being on a site that they shouldn't be on, or not following along, using an incorrect app, something of that, that nature, and then misusing the property, or damaging property, and then low-level theft. They, school materials, pencils, crayons, things of that nature, something that's, that's low-level that would happen in the classroom. So these are things that we would expect our teachers to, to handle. And then when we get into some of the more serious behaviors, those are behaviors that we're going to want our administrators to, to deal with or manage. And we're looking more at some of those serious policy violations, and so our administrators would look more specifically at what was, what was the behavior, and did it, or did it not violate the policy? What was the significance as far as the impact to an individual, or a group of students, or the overall school? This can be, again, noncompliance, disrespect, we're thinking more along the lines of those chronic, chronic behaviors, and so disrespect, and I'll talk a little bit about the progression, but disrespect might warrant a correction, some sort of corrective, correcting of the behavior, a warning, and then a call home to a parent, maybe a detention, but when we're talking about the, like willful defiance and disrespect that, that has gone above and beyond the, the classroom, then those are things that we want our administrators to support. That physical aggression that raises to the level of fighting where there may, may be a serious injury, or significant, a significant disruption of the school environment, or jeopardizing the, the safety and security of not just the two that are involved, but multiple students, those are things that we have to have our administrators deal with. And so we have there the hitting and the punching, hair pulling, or just some of the things that, that we might see. Our language, it's important that, that our students understand that there's certain language that we just don't want in, in our schools and in our classrooms, and so that's things that, language that's offensive or vulgar, inappropriate, things that are racially offensive, or sexual in nature, sexually explicit, just inappropriate language that is offensive, that offends others and makes others uncomfortable, those are administrative level. And then that willful destruction of property, that's another. Theft, high value, and so that can be personal or school property. And then weapons, that's bringing a weapon to school, brandishing a weapon, making a threat with a weapon, those serious type offenses, those are, those administrative managed behaviors, and then the harassment and bullying, threats and intimidation. So we listed here just a few things that we, we believe in practice, and it's important, a few slides ago, we talked, talked about some of the things like responsive classrooms, social emotional learning. We know that students will sometimes make poor choices, and through, through doing that, through the process that we take, we, we always want there to be some learning and some understanding, not just the learning of what, what was the behavior and why was it inappropriate, but also some understanding and restoration, and what was its impact, and how did it make others feel, and then how can we move forward with bringing some sort of justice to, to the situation? And so that number one item there we have listed are the rules and regulations. So rules and regulations are established for safety and the well-being of all students in FCCPS, and so taking a positive behavior approach and modeling consistency of behavior, helping students to understand the types of behaviors that are not just expected, but the types of behaviors that we wanna see, and then the types of behaviors that are inappropriate, so having conversations with students about that. And direct intervention and opportunities for learning, again, the behavior modification and restoration. We've really done more over the past year or so with restorative justice, and looking for opportunities to engage students in some sort of, in a disciplinary process that also incorporates learning, but also restoration, and giving the victim a voice in the, in the matter, because disciplining a student, or a group of students after a behavior without, assuming that there's a victim in, in a particular case, without giving the victim an opportunity to come and share how they were harmed and how they've been impacted, we know we have to consider all of, all of those options in working with our students. And then the progressive discipline, I talked a little bit about that. We wanna take progressive discipline approaches, and so that might look like anything from, again, talking with the student, a warning, correcting the behavior, helping the student to understand why the behavior is inappropriate, and why, whether it's in a classroom, or recess, or in the hallways, why the behavior is not appropriate for that setting, and then it could expand, or, or kinda kick up to an administrative referral, or a detention conference with the parents, and so on and so forth. Up to, again, depending on the significance of the behavior and severity, an out-of-school suspension. And then continued growth and support for students and staff who are impacted. Again, that, that's important, knowing that sometimes an incident will occur, or a student may engage in a behavior that has a long-lasting effect, and so what opportunities can we take for those who have been impacted to not just bring, if at all possible, bring the offender and the offended into a room and have a conversation like a restorative justice circle where all voices are heard, but to also look for opportunities to circle back to those who have been impacted. Weeks, maybe months after the fact, to continue to check in, because sometimes, again, things may happen, or a student may be involved in a situation that's very long-lasting, so we don't want to neglect that piece. And I think that might be the last slide.
Thanks. So I welcome questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bates. Any questions or comments from anyone? Yes, Vash, your goal?
Thanks for putting this together, and I think it was important that as we engage with the principals toward the end of last year, to understand some of the challenges and the changes in the environment and the atmosphere that they're experiencing, so I think this is helpful to know how, what's the, the school climate. I'm curious about like, as we do this each year, which I think is the right suggestion for cadence, I imagine the content of this is mostly qualitative, and it probably won't change that much, because these are a lot of, you know, defined assumptions that we have. Would it be possible to try to overlay some of our existing data on this, especially for the community around whether it's climate, or school safety items that we've asked, especially longitudinal, so we can kind of see the qualitative presentation that you have along with the quantitative? And I don't know, I hesitate to ask this, but it would be great to also get at a higher level, what are some of the behavioral data that would be shared? And I hesitate to ask this, because I know that the, you know, if you're looking at how many kids are, you know, in trouble for swearing, like that's a very subjective disciplinary measure that teachers can take, so I'm not looking at that kind of classroom level, I'm looking at more of, that might help with understanding that some of the lessons learned that the principals had shared, that might be good for the board to know, as well as the community, on what we're all seeing at an aggregate level. So can you comment about the, the ability to make this a bit more quantitative and longitudinal, not just qualitative and fixed over time?
Yeah, so I, I think first, we would need, you know, obviously, I would need to talk with, with Dr. Noon, and we can, so we're in somewhat of a unique situation in that our, the end size is always going to be small. I know, I've been in previous situations or scenarios where there was an expectation that we shared suspension data, or we shared expulsion data, and things of that nature. And so I think we would just have to get an idea, better understanding of exactly what quantitative data you're looking at, but we can, we could probably find a way to, to provide some of that data to you without, without jeopardizing-
Yeah, the end size of FERPA, that makes sense. I think with the, the data from the K-12 insight, there would be no issues with sharing that data. I think actually pulling that out of our existing surveys, just some of the items, and overlaying that in this type of presentation would be helpful for the context. I think to some degree, presenting that in the other data presentation, that might get glossed over, so that would be no issues there. And I fully understand the end size issues with FERPA, we're not looking at getting that like an OCR, Office of Civil Rights report, that, that's not what we're looking at. I think we're just looking at any kind of behavioral data that, that you all would decide, we're not gonna try to decide, we don't wanna get in the, the decision-making around that, but just anything to help give more of a quantitative understanding of how the principals, what they see, because I think that was a really important story that they shared with us, so we'll defer to you all if there's anything that's possible to do that.
Yeah, we can certainly talk about it and look at it. You know, to your point, you know, the third slide in the presentation had a K-12 insight bullet point on it, and that point was that 90-plus percent of our parents feel that the school is a safe place. Like, that's a great, a great data point, and very unusual and outside the norm for the rest of the country. No one else is answering it that way, but that would be a good contextual data point along with some others to also share, because I, I do think, you know, when you do hear about suspensions, expulsions, restorative circles, you know, all that, it's a little, it can, you know, sort of scare you a little bit as a parent, but the idea is, you know, all of this goes to this notion of safety and security, and that, that, you know, what at the end of the day are we trying to accomplish? We're trying to accomplish a safe environment for our kids to be able to learn effectively, and as a consequence of that, you know, you gotta follow the rules. And as a consequence of that, you know, you got to follow the rules. There are some things that you've got to do to make sure that this place is safe. And if it isn't, then we need to, we need to move through sort of the disciplinary process, whether it starts with the teacher or it ends up with an administrator. But, you know, one or two kids can't ruin the the learning environment for the rest of, rest of the students. But but without that context, that 90-plus percent of our parents feel like our schools are safe and we're not suspending kids at a rate like anybody else in the country. We haven't had an expulsion in X number of years. That's, that's a pretty good mark.
Yeah, I think that's where the longitudinal might help, so we can see and compare ourselves to ourselves versus, you know, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think anyone would be overly concerned with the, like you said, like, there's a high degree of confidence in the safety of our schools. So I think, I think it's okay to share some of that data at the aggregate level, longitudinal.
And and I think, just to jump on that, I know that during our tours and talking with some of the principals, this is nothing that's quantitative, but just sort of a sense of these seasoned professionals, that some of this is still from COVID students, you know, being home and learning how to, again, be in an atmosphere with kids from all different backgrounds, that sort of thing. So to your point, that would also be interesting to see, you know, a couple of years from now, have we sort of gotten out of that whole COVID, you know, impact?
Yes, Ms. Tice.
Yeah, I was just going to piggyback on this. I don't want to hammer the point too much, but I think the story that Dr. Gold was referring to is we were speaking to an administrator last spring and it was March or something. And he said, I have X number, like, two or three times as many referrals at this point in the year than we had all of the year prior. That kind of context, I think, is really important because it really highlights that, you know, that there is an increase in behavior that that we need to address and probably a lot of it is post-COVID. But I think as parents, yes, it could scare you that, oh, there's just all this bad behavior in the classroom. But it also really drives home the point that we're all in this together and that we all need to go home. And it's, it's not just one, one or two teachers having a bad day. Like, if there's data like that that shows there is a rise, then we all collectively, as parents, you know, need to go home and talk to our kids and be like, look, this isn't okay and this is happening too much. And what can we do to be, you know, to be part of the solution? I think that it's kind of empowering as parents to kind of see that data and realize it's not just a one-off story here or there and that, and and that there's something that we should all be digging in together to to address. I felt, I just felt like that was powerful data last year to show, you know, that things, that things are hard and the teachers need our support as a, as a parent, not just as a school board member.
Thank you, Ms. Tice. Ms. Silverman.
Thank you, Chair Jones. I have a question. I, you know, as Ms. Tice just referred to, that there has been an increase in bullying and there has been an increase, I believe, in physical violence or just verbal violence. And I, I know that some of the parents have reached out to me individually. I believe they've reached out to the board and to the school administrators. And I guess maybe just a few comments about what we really are doing to keep kids safe beyond just the the bullet points, you know, what specific things maybe that we're implementing in the schools. I think after this past spring, I think a lot of parents became more concerned about sending their kids to school. And secondly, you know, maybe just a couple of comments about what parents can be doing to help support the teachers. Because if kids really aren't acting as they should, as as we expect them to act in schools, what can the parents be doing in order to help support the teachers and the schools to get them to the place that they need to be? So I guess those are two separate questions.
Yeah, I think, I'll take that if that's all right. I I would start with the worry about sending your kids to school. One thing we know from the data across the country is that schools are the safest places for kids in the community. And I would argue, and I think our data would bear it out, is that we actually, in comparison to the rest of the state, probably have the safest school division in terms of disciplinary consequences that we have to report to the state. We we report very few, not because we don't want to, we just don't have them. And there are violations that we have to report to the state. And in comparison to other divisions, this is an incredibly safe school. And part of the reason for that, and this kind of gets to, I think, a little bit about what do we do, is one of the reasons is we're really small. The other is that we're super relational. We know our kids, we know their parents, kids know each other, kids know each other's siblings, kids know each other's parents. And one of the nice things about that and the way that they travel in a cohort, because we're so small, is that they're, they're inclined to let us know when there's something that's going on. So that has been a real value. So in the presentation, one of the things you heard was that school safety is a team sport. And really, the idea of our kids helping us with that is is really important. In the event that there is an issue with bullying that that perhaps rises to the level of a protected class case or a student who is part of a Title IX case or or whatever the case may be, in those particular circumstances, there are some very specific guidelines that we follow to separate students nearly immediately as we dig in and do our investigation. And we call those interim measures. And those interim measures are put in place right away to separate students. Once the evaluation or the investigation of the case is done, typically, that final, in that final analysis, if it is a Title IX violation or if it is a protected class violation, there's an additional letter that comes out that says that here are the measures that no longer are going to be interim. So it could be, you know, this student will not be in contact with this student for the foreseeable future. This student may have an opportunity at a moment's notice to go speak to their counselor. This, this student may, at any point in the time, walk off and speak to a school administrator or, 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 there's a lot of things that are in there. We also, you know, it's interesting, as we start the year, one of the things that our teachers do is they review all of these different cases where there've been circumstances where kids can't be together. So there's a community look at it as well. But those are, those are, those kinds of interventions are really reserved for those particular cases. I'm probably giving you more than you asked for, but I'll just sort of put it out there.
No, it's been great, thank you. Keep going.
But those are really reserved for sort of the big cases that are Title IX or are those cases where there's a protected class. In a, in a normal routine, sort of, and I would say, a low-level bullying incident, where, for example, a kid is bullying another kid because his shoes are funny looking or whatever the case may be. One, there's new legislation out that just came from the state that says that within 24 hours, the parent of the bully, and it's still up for debate whether the the bullied parent also needs, the parent of the bullied needs to be communicated with, but to be on the safe side, we'll be communicating with both the bully and the bullied parents to say that there's this incident that's happened, we're working on it, and when we figure out what's going on, we'll get back to you. In that sort of lower level case, that's where this restorative practice really comes in, where our kids can sit together with a school counselor. A school counselor can run an intervention process with these kids, where they can sort of talk it through and use that as an educational opportunity for kids. In the case of a fight, and and we have, I don't want to say we joke about it, but we sort of joke about it because we don't really have fights in Falls Church. We call them Falls Church fights. It's where these kids will sort of look at each other and pretend that they're going to fight and they don't fight. But in the event that there is a fight, we, that, that, for example, is one of those issues that results in a suspension from school. And it's a suspension from school immediately because the kids got physical. And it doesn't matter whether you started it or not, you were in it. And by the time we get to the bottom of it, you know, typically, in 95% of the cases, there was some antagonizing that was going on, whether the kids started it or not, but we send the kids home. So, so that, those are sort of ranges of things that we do. In terms of what parents can do, parents can really support us by reminding their kids to be nice and and to to be, be a good citizen of of the school system and of the community. And that they have a responsibility to make sure that everyone in our school system is cared for and taken care of. So if you see, see something, say something, if you see something that's inappropriate, you've got to tell somebody, even if it's hard, you still need to tell somebody because we're not going to tolerate that kind of behavior. The other thing parents can do is if there is a circumstance that involves a student and we call home and we ask for your help to support us because your child has done something they shouldn't have done, is, is to believe us. You know, and if if there is a question, we certainly want to answer those questions and we'll walk through it with you. But we don't make this stuff up. This really, we don't call a parent and say, your kid did this, without a pretty significant investigatory process, where we've interviewed kids, we've talked to your child, your child will tell us, yep, you know what, I shouldn't have done that, I did it. And what, where it gets really complicated and complex for us sometimes is when the kid goes home and says, well, I didn't really do it, I was just kidding. You know, and then the parent comes back and says, I'm going to appeal the suspension because my kid said he was just kidding. All the other witnesses saw it happen. The kid said, I did it. And then, and then we're spending, you know, five-plus hours dealing with this suspension appeal or this appeal of discipline. So I would say, work with us. You know, the last thing in the world we want to do, ever, is send a kid home, ever. And and that is really reserved for the most intensive behaviors and those things that, or or those behaviors that require sort of a cooling off period, where perhaps you need a couple hours just to to go home, come, and then come back tomorrow, do some self-regulation and come back tomorrow, we're going to start over. So it's probably a lot, but hopefully that's helpful.
No, this has been great. And I, I think, I appreciated all of it and I hope that everyone watching has too.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. And there are comments or questions? Sure, Dr. Ortiz.
Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Bates, and all the explanation, Dr. Noonan and and others on this. I think one of the things I wanted to ask about, and this kind of follows up to the terrific restorative justice presentation that we heard last spring, I think, is that, you know, physical bullying, I think, you know, I think, you know, maybe old school or when I was growing up in the 1980s, you know, we don't see a, a, a lot of that. But, you know, children can be, and this is not to say that this is widespread, but can be incredibly emotionally mean at times. And sometimes part of that, some of that's growing and learning boundaries and things like that. And sometimes that can be hard to detect and to kind of root out and and to, and to manage. Could you tell us how you, you know, both message, you know, how you message this to the students and work with students to make sure that they are kind of on the lookout for this kind of behaviors? And and what kind of, you know, processes are in place to help identify and manage it among the administrators and staff?
Yeah, I think, I think it starts with what Dr. Noonan had shared earlier about the fact that we are relational. And so one thing that I have observed that we're, our staff is exceptional at at doing is just understanding kind of where the students are emotionally, which kids are coming in and are already, from the time they step in the door or step off of the bus, are they having a good day? Do they look down or are they not their normal self? And then starting, once they've identified that, having, having those conversations with the students, are you okay? Come talk to me, what's going on? I, you know, I can tell you're, you're not yourself. And then kind of, kind of taking it from there. I've also seen a number of situations where students, in being good friends to their peers, have come forward and said, listen, I know that this isn't something that William wants, you know, wants me to share, but William's not in a great situation. And so I think the constant reinforcing of see something, say something, building positive relationships as part of our wellness equity and belonging focus. This year, we've talked a lot about ensuring at every school that every student has a trusted adult that they can come to, that they feel comfortable with, to share things that may be happening. And the, and we haven't dug into this much, but I do, I also know that there are, there's training and and learning, professional development out there that specifically looks at bullying and cyberbullying. And many of our staff have, have done trainings on that. But kind of to your point, what are some of those look for? What is a bystander versus an actual bullier or someone who's carrying out the bullying? And personally, just, and not to, you know, digress, but there was a training that I I attended some years ago where it, it looked at, you know, groups of students who were actually engaged in bullying. And in this particular case, it was a group of of girls. And what it pointed out was that the young lady who was actually being bullied and she's standing in this circle of what appears to be friends, she's smiling as the other girls are talking. And at no point in time does anybody raise their voice, at no point in time does anybody make an aggressive gesture. But then when you learn about what was being said and what was actually happening, what I learned through that training is that sometimes a natural response for someone who's being bullied or harassed is to kind of like stiffen up and and maybe respond in a way that is not, I can't believe you just said that in turn and, you know, run away or walk away, but to actually remain in kind of stabilized in place while it's happening. And so I know many of our staff have engaged in in learning and in training such as that to help them better identify. But under wellness equity and belonging, we'll do a lot more digging into the whole relationship piece in identifying some of those signs. And our counselors and social workers are, like, that's kind of their, that's kind of their jam. And so they're, they're used to doing, doing those things and recognizing those signs and having those conversations with students.
Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. You know, I was looking at Slide 21, the safety is a shared responsibility in terms of student responsibility, communicate with school staff members about observed threats, behaviors, actions, harassment. You know, and I, I think that definitely makes sense at the Meridian level, but I just wonder, you know, thinking now I have two middle schoolers and, you know, I, I'm not sure if middle schoolers have that maturity to be able to, even if they know something is off, is approach a, a staff member. So I don't know if, if, I'm sure that they're, I guess, do we have any kinds of talks with the middle schoolers in particular?
We do. This is all part of the Husky Flex and some of the PAC lessons too, on how to, how to talk to somebody, how to access help. And oftentimes, what happens at the middle school is it isn't the person that's necessarily being bullied or in trouble, they'll mention it to a friend and then the friend will come. And we also tell kids during that, those, those times, you know, you can be a good friend here. And one of the ways to be a good friend is to stand up for somebody who needs some extra help. So those are some of the things that we do talk about. One of the data points I just wanted to hit on that I mentioned in that convocation, kind of going back to what Dr. Bates was talking about, and to your point, Dr. Ortiz, is not just the relational component, but over 90% of our kids reported in the student survey that they have someone that they are connected with, that they can talk to at any point in time. And I think that's a really good metric for us to sort of pay attention to, because I'm not sure that that's the norm either. I think a lot of kids get lost. It still means that 20 or 10% of our kids, you know, might feel lost. And so how do we continue to build on that is something for us to to look at.
Could, not to get too far down the path, but also, I know we have a new position with Rob Carey. Could that be some, a resource too that we use at the secondary level?
He is already building relationships with some of the, well, he's built relationships with so many of those kids that have come up and are there, starting at Oak Street.
Right, right.
And yes, that's a perfect place.
That's why he's so valuable, I think, yeah.
Yep.
Great, great. And there are comments or questions? Okay, well, I think that does it for our presentation. Just want to thank Mr. Fowler and Dr. Bates so much for your presentation. Very informative. And Ms. Tice, thank you for making sure this, this happened this evening. I think it was really always a good way to start off the school year, good refresher. So thank you both for the, for the presentation. Very helpful. Okay, we're going to move on to item 2.03, school start times and early release Wednesdays. And I'm going to turn it back over to you, Dr. Noonan.
Yes, thank you. Do we have a, who's got the clicker? Can I borrow it?
Absolutely.
Just so that I can have it as appropriate. So, so thank you so much for, for your, for the opportunity tonight to talk about school hours and early release Wednesdays. This is going to actually be the third time that this board has had a discussion about this. And it's going to be a continued discussion. And at the end of the presentation tonight, we've taken the timeline that has been developed by the board and kind of put that in there so that you all, plus the community that's watching at home, will have a sense of kind of where we're, where we're headed going forward. Tonight, this presentation will be handled by myself and Kristen Michael, our chief operating officer. And as we talked about this presentation tonight, one of the things we were And as we talked about this presentation tonight, one of the things we were hoping would happen, and of course, we will, you know, we lead by being led, but one of the things we were hoping would happen would be that, in some ways, this would be a little bit like the budget process, in that we would do a presentation, there might be some high-level kinds of questions that come out of this evening, but any sort of more detailed kinds of questions that you have, if you'd send those to us, we're building out an FAQ, and we could, not unlike the budget questions, build not a, not a budget question book, but an FAQ that sort of answers some of the questions that have come up. So just kind of put that out there as a structure that may be useful, not just to you, but to the community as we continue the dialogue and engagement around, around these early release Wednesdays and school hours. So with that, let me, let me just remind the community that, again, this is the third presentation. We have provided links to prior meetings. And these, these prior board meetings have been about the early release Wednesday and school schedules. We'd like to take just a second to sort of back up just a sec, just a minute, and sort of talk about where this came from. But before we do that, I want to thank the Health and Wellness Committee for their advocacy and research supporting these later start times. I know that, you know, everybody in the community has a belief of where they want to go, and I'm, I'm just here to present some information, and that's our role tonight with, with Kristin. There will be, this evening, just to sort of frame out for you, three options about the adjustments for early release Wednesdays. It's really two options and status quo, because status quo is an option, right? And then we'll talk a little bit about the input for you all on the school board level. So the dates that we had these, these are hyperlinked to the presentation. So anyone who wants to go back and look at these, we're on Oc, sorry, April 25th, 2023. And in that meeting, we did do some definition of terms, kind of talked about what's the difference between site-based professional development, division-wide professional development, professional learning communities, collaborative team meetings, those kinds of things. We talked about the current state of early release, how we use those early releases and alignment to the strategic plan. In the second meeting on February 14th, we provided an elementary and secondary start time and provided a timeline for those days. We looked at previous adjustments to the school, school timeline. And as a reminder, we did, we used to start at 7:20, and then that was moved several years ago to 8:05. And so what we know now is that there is some advocacy out there to move it a little bit further to 8:30. We shared some of the challenges of the school schedule with, particularly around athletics and transportation. And then we talked about what the research says and some potential options regarding sleep. So with that, just sort of to walk us back, the school board's Health and Wellness Advisory Committee has advocated for these later start times. And what you'll see in these bullets are some of the research that's come out about later start times that suggests from the American Academy of Pediatrics that 8:30 is the, the start time, no earlier than 8:30, to ensure that there is sufficient sleep for adolescents. And then the Center for Disease Control has also noted that our adolescent students are not getting enough sleep, and as a consequence of that, are at risk for being overweight, drinking alcohol, smoking tobacco, or using drugs, or even poor performance in academics. So what has led us to this point is two, two things, really. One is the advocacy from the Health and Wellness and the, some members of the school board. And then the other is sort of the data that's behind that from the Academy of Pediatrics, as well as from the Center for Disease Control. So how we use early release, and I just put this out there as the big picture. Everything we do, and this is just a point of information, it doesn't, there's no intentionality to drive one conversation any other, any particular way. Everything we try to do, we do try to align to our FCCPS strategic plan. We know that that strategic plan is going to need some tweaking and revising along the way, and we're open to that. But this was an opportunity within those early release Wednesdays to work on our IB multi-year program evaluation in '22. It was also an opportunity to invest in our people and look through the lens of IB-infused teaching and learning by using some of those early, early release Wednesdays for teacher-led professional development. And then those PDs really center on our students, not only their academic needs, but their social emotional needs. And those are, those bolded areas are kind of pulled from our strategic plan. But the bottom line is those early release Wednesdays are really used for professional development. And, and, and that's an important component to just sort of an organizational ethos and culture that a school division has, is if we're asking students to be learners, we should be learners as well. It doesn't mean that we have to do it one way or another, but in the past, what we have done is we've, have spent those Wednesdays doing that professional development during those times. So I'm going to turn it over here in just a second to Kristin. But before I do, just to give you a sense of kind of where we, where we started, as I mentioned, one of the changes that we are going to share is no change at all. But the adjustments that we made within the two other options that are beyond that are really to allow for our secondaries to start at 8:30 in the morning and then potentially change those early release Wednesdays to, to something else and look at how that impacts ultimately sort of our instructional hours on the other days of the week. I asked this board, and I appreciate the opportunity to do this, to really think about these two items together. Because as we've dug into it and really looked at instructional hours and how best to meet the needs of professional development and the like, they really are hand in glove. And there really was no way for us to do it without doing them sort of together as part of our schedule. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kristin Michael, and I'll hand the clicker down. And then she and I will sort of take some of those high-level questions at the end. But again, if you all have some other questions that we would, would like to get responded to, we certainly are happy to do that and do it more publicly in an FAQ format.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. So each of the three options tonight is presented with the exact same data. It starts out in each case with a calendar. We've used next year's calendar, so not the school year that we're currently in, hoping that that will really help the board and the community through this discussion. So this first option is what we're currently doing. We've labeled it weekly for the, for the slide presentation. And that's a weekly release at elementaries and a monthly release at the secondary campus. So in all, looking at this future potential calendar for next year, there would be 28 early releases at the elementary level. And for anyone who's looking at the calendar, those are labeled EER, so elementary early release. And then there would be nine early releases at the secondary level. So those are labeled AER for all early release. So on those days, elementary and secondary would be released. Because this is the status quo calendar, we stuck with our current policy, which is we do not have an early release on any weeks that have a holiday or a teacher workday. So you'll see that going throughout this calendar. So in a week, you know, whether it's a week like Thanksgiving or a week with a Monday holiday like Labor Day, or even weeks where we have a teacher workday, so we look at the conference days, for example, in October, you'll see that there are no early releases those weeks. When we look at this calendar, we also calculated, thinking this might be helpful, how many hours would be available for professional development on those early release Wednesdays? So you can see in this current status quo option, that's 35 hours at Jesse Thackeray preschool, 77 hours at both elementary schools, and 24 hours at the secondary schools. Then for each of these examples that we prepared, we also attached what the school hours would be. So in each case, we've shown you the starting time and the ending time. So just looking at Jesse Thackeray, for example, 7:55 a.m. start to 2:20 in the afternoon. And then each of those early release days, in this case, would be at 1:45 p.m., right? When we calculated all of these early releases, just one other note, they don't include the early release on the last day, on which we've really always done and seen a little bit separately from early release Wednesdays. And then we also didn't take into account the exam schedule that's in place the last week at the high school. So if we move to our second option, this one we've labeled semi-monthly. In the semi-monthly early release calendar, there are 16 early releases, and they are for all schools. So whenever elementary had an early release, secondary would have an early release as well. In this option, we didn't include an early release in August or in June. So we have one early release in months that we have heavier holidays, which are November and December. And then we have two early release Wednesdays in all of the other months. So this provides 48 hours of professional development at Jesse Thackeray preschool, Mount Daniel, Oak Street, ever so slightly less at 45, and secondary at 48. When we look at the release times in this example, we have a staggered release at Mount Daniel and Oak Street, which in, that's what results in that slightly less professional development time, right? And that accounts for making it easier for parents to pick up and a slightly longer lunch. Then the last option that we looked at is a monthly potential early release. In this option, we have one early release each month. We included it in every month, including August and June. It results in 11 early release Wednesdays for all of our schools. And the professional development time in this case would be 33 hours at Jesse Thackeray, 33 at Mount Daniel, ever so slightly less, 31 at Oak Street, and then 33 hours at the secondary level. And when we look at the school hours in this example, again, they're all listed, including the early release times. In every one of these options, we do have secondary getting out before elementary, which potentially could help facilitate childcare of older kids caring for younger kids. And then the last slide that Dr. Noonan talked about was the timeframe that the school board discussed at your last meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Michael. Very clear and concise. Any questions? I'm sure there are questions and comments. Yes, Dr. Dimmick.
I first just comment for any board member who's curious. I was kind of curious as to what Arlington does for their start times. I know that some of our staff has raised concerns about their commutes being more difficult. And it strikes me that Arlington may be similar to Falls Church in that it's, their teachers may live all over the place. It seems that the majority of elementary schools in Arlington start at 9:00 a.m. And the high schools, it looks like they start at 8:20 and get out at 3:10. And elementary is 9:00 to 3:50, in case anyone's interested. And then I do, I do have some questions. So professional development happens on these early release Wednesdays. But we've, we've started to get public comment from teachers, and a lot of the, of the teachers are talking about the planning time that they, that they, they have planning time that they spend on their early release Wednesdays. And so I guess I'm sort of wondering what the balance is between planning time and early release. I'm also wondering, I know college, the world of college professors is much more than the world of teachers. How much, as a college professor, you, you just do it all on your time in the classroom and all the time outside of the classroom is research and prepping for class. What is the expectation of what teachers do outs? I guess, do we, if we don't give the teachers planning time on Wednesday, will they not prep their classes? And then parallel to that is, if that is the case, then is it equitable that the elementary school teachers have all of this planning time and the secondary school teachers don't? Because I also understand from previous presentations that planning time is, has been integrated into the day at the elementaries. And I know at the secondaries, I think each teacher has a block off. So yeah, I'll stop.
Thanks. Thanks for the question. There's a lot to that. Let me, let me start with the, the purest possible approaches to those two times. One is planning time that's built into the school day versus the early release Wednesday. When we tasked the Oak Street and the Mount Daniel principal two years ago to look at aligning encore programs so they could back-to-back with each other or to collapse near each other, so that we could then ultimately give our teachers as much uninterrupted time by grade-level team as possible, they were able to do that effectively last year and, and this year, to where the vast majority of our traditional classroom core teachers, and I'm not talking about encore, right? I'm just talking about if I'm a fourth-grade teacher to meet with a fourth-grade team, I'm going to get a pretty good extended amount of time each day to meet with that team and to do some personal planning. So those are the two things that really should be happening during that planning time during the day. Now, one of the things that I'm sure that folks that are sitting at home watching this will say is, "Well, that time gets eaten up by a reading specialist or a gifted and talented specialist who wants to come in and meet with us, or the math specialist who wants to come in and meet with us." And, and some of that's true. And I, and I want to be fair and honest about that, that there are times that those folks do come in and, and provide some instructional coaching and some data looks. But the, the majority of that time should be spent for collaborative planning time with their grade-level team and independent planning. On Wednesdays, that time has traditionally been one of two things. It's either been professional development that's led at the site level, meaning that if I'm the principal at Mount Daniel and I have an early release Wednesday, and I need to work with the staff on, you know, how to access new level books in reading, and I'm going to have Phyllis Krawinski come and talk about the, the leveled reading books in the reading room and do a training on that, that would happen on an early release Wednesday. If, for example, Jen Santiago said, "I need to do an ESOL training, and Tim, I need your staff on one of the early release Wednesdays," then there's sort of a negotiation and a dance that happens. And then there's an opportunity for us to go out and talk with the staff as a whole on those Wednesdays. That's the piece that, that is the challenge in all of that, in all of this, is if we reduce from 77 hours, for example, at the elementary level to 36 by going to one day, we just would need to find some other place where we'd have an opportunity to do some of the, the bigger professional development for the division. I'm not saying that that's insurmountable. I think we can figure it out, whatever the will of the board is. But, but that, that is the challenge. So in a perfect world, just to sort of recap, that time when kids are out for encore and recess and lunch, I should be eating my lunch during lunch. But when they're out for encore and they're out for recess, those teachers do have those now combined into one singular block, so they're kind of back-to-back. And during that period of time, teachers should be planning by themselves, should be planning with their teams. And we know that there's going to be a few other things that come along, but by and large, those are the two types of planning. And then on the early release Wednesdays, they should be doing professional development. So I think where there's a challenge is sometimes in the language that those early release Wednesdays were really designated for professional development, not for individual teacher planning. Now, there could be some team planning that goes on, because you may have done a training on the new MY, or the new PYP standards or the new implementation of NYPD. And so as a, as a collaborative team, you're going to talk about them. But that time was not, in my understanding of the historical value of those Wednesdays, really was not about personal planning, it was more about division-wide planning. Does that answer your question?
I guess if you could also speak to, I guess, so that is the division-wide vision of it, but if it is used for personal planning time and the secondary campus doesn't have that, like, that doesn't seem equitable.
Right. And I, and I will say, the high school would love some early release time. But did you want to mention something?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to offer, so when we look at the early release time, which is right around, I think, 1 o'clock is 1:15, Kristin, on average. But let's just, yeah. And so if I'm at the elementary school and we're doing our early release at 1 o'clock, and, but my contract goes through until 4 o'clock, well, we may have a professional, a division-level professional development, whether it's ESOL-related or equity, equity-related or working on our division-level professional development plan, and we may pull staff over here to, to meet. We may need them for two hours. So we have them from, say, 1:15 to 3:15 or 1:30 to 3:30. But so technically, we're not keeping them that whole time. There's always flexibility, and we share with principals, we, we want them to have flexibility in, in this work. So they're all, I do know that there's times where a teacher then may say, "Okay, well, I have an additional hour or an additional 30 minutes. I'm either going to stay here or stay at..." I'm either going to stay here or stay at the school, and I can then do grading or my own personal planning. And so the early release Wednesdays also offer that flexibility, because oftentimes, whether it's school-wide or team-wide, team-level or division-level, if we have two and a half to three hours to work with, it might be 90 minutes or it might be two hours, which does leave some time for teachers to then kind of circle back, connect, and do some of their own personal planning. But I... Yeah.
I think Dr. Anderson was asking... Yes, Dr. Anderson.
Yeah, my other question was going to be a follow-up on that to ask about the... Just the difference between the number of hours that the elementary gets and the secondary, and it seems to have gone on for a very long time. And the secondary is very successful in what they do. And I'm sure they would love... Everybody would... All teachers, I'm sure, would love more, you know, professional development time, and I'm sure they could use it wisely. But I think we do have to think about the marginal value of that, of that professional development. So we can... Any employee can benefit from professional development, but I think we need to think about, you know, how much do we need to add to make them more effective? And how much juice do we get out of that squeeze? I think that's something that we, you know, need to ask. As a follow-up on the timing, I'm just curious about the staggered release.
Of the two elementaries?
Yeah, for the two... I'm just curious.
Sure. So when we looked at schedules, Oak Street would like to have a little bit longer lunch, 30-minute lunch to allow their teachers to ensure that they have a 30-minute lunch. So by giving them that additional 10 minutes of lunch, it requires 10 more minutes of instructional time for the instructional time at the two schools to be the same. And we've heard from parents often that if we had a staggered release, that it's sometimes beneficial if they have to pick up two kids. So it seemed like maybe this would do both of those things.
But I want to ensure that we... That teachers get a 30-minute lunch. The way it is now at Mount Daniel is that their 20-minute lunch backs up to other time that they're doing something else. So that's where those teachers are getting 30-minute lunch. So I don't want you to think that because they're getting a 20-minute lunch, your teachers aren't getting 20 minutes... Aren't getting a full lunch.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Everybody... Yeah. Which would have been a great question. That's why I felt like I needed to... No, no, everybody gets a 30.
Ms. Ty, do you have a question?
Well, it's sort of been answered already. And again, not trying to hammer the same point, but I just want to make sure there's not... I think the difference between the middle school, I mean, the secondary and elementary early releases probably predates any of us here. It's been going on so well. There's not a strong philosophical reason or pedagogical reason that we know of for that we kind of all have inherited. I mean, I could come up with some, because elementary school teachers, it's just a different approach than secondary, right? They're teaching multiple subjects instead of one. I mean, there... I'm sure there are, but it's not something that anyone here created or feels passionately about.
Well, I don't know that that's true. We've been asked to be a little bit dispassionate about it and to sort of...
And then from just a philosophical, that's the difference between the two. Do you have...
Yeah. Well, I think you'd have to... In your conversations with staff, I think that would be a great question to ask them and let them sort of give you their take about, you know, why do you think it's more important or less important to have it at the elementary versus the secondary? I have some beliefs about that, but I think it'd probably be better to hear from our teachers.
Yeah, no, I'd be happy. I'm looking forward to the town halls we have in the schedule to look at that. I would be surprised if any teacher didn't support, you know, early release, whether they're secondary or elementary. I don't know a teacher that would turn down time for professional development. I mean, I'm sure they're out there, and I hope they're listening, and they tell me why, but just curious.
Yeah. I think some of it, you know, in talking with some teachers, particularly at the Mount Daniel level, I think also not even putting the planning and professional development aside. And I remember this from when my kids were young, giving our youngest learners a break in the middle of the week, you know, because it's just a lot. It's, you know, I think a lot of us went to half-day kindergarten. And now we have, it's basically a workday that these five-year-olds are attending. And so part of that was also, I think, you know, way back to the Kathy Haleko days, giving them a break. And actually, I know I've said this before, I would totally be in support of having more early release Wednesdays at the secondary level, personally. I, you know, my kids are athletes, and it's not just athletes. You can be in the play, you can do whatever. But our kids are going 100 miles a minute. And, you know, there's never more, you know... They're never more joyous than on an early release Wednesday. And sometimes they come home and they take a nap. Sometimes they go out to lunch, they walk home. It is just, you know, when we talk about mental health and social, emotional well-being, I just think it's fantastic that... I would love for them, right, this is, again, this is a mom, to have two days a month at the secondary level, because I just think it's just such a great break for them, and it's just really helps their stress level. Yes, Ms. Silverman?
Dr. Nune, thank you for clarifying kind of the purpose of the early release, that it is more of a professional development situation versus the planning time. And they're just really helpful for us to hear, I think, and for the community to hear, that it's about professional development. I'm going to be Debbie Downer for a second and talk about the secondary early release and why I don't think it's a good idea. To me, it's secondary early release is kind of a ticking time bomb. I have parents who have told me that their kids are going over to houses with guns in the house, and they're in a parent's home. I know that we've had sexual assaults at people's homes, you know, when kids are being released from school at noon and going to houses that are just unsupervised. I've had, you know, are we... What is the disaster that's going to happen because our kids are unsupervised from noon until one parent get home? I've heard of students showing up to practices at 4:00 p.m. intoxicated and under the influence. I've been told just a lot of different situations, and I just think that it's kind of asking for trouble and for problem having the secondary early releases. I'm not advocating that we eliminate the one. I just would be really nervous about adding a second one. I know, you know, I'm sure most of our students are doing the right thing and not engaging in that behavior, but, you know, all it takes is one situation for a really bad situation to happen. And then I have a question, or I guess more a question slash comment. I did notice that on all of these, the elementary starts at 9:00 a.m. And I know that, you know, Ms. Dimick stated that Arlington, for example, starts at 9:00 a.m. And Arlington is closer into DC, which I think that makes that community a little bit easier, us being a little bit farther away. I just... I know that we got a lot of comments back in the spring from parents and from teachers that the 9:00 a.m. start time for elementary would be difficult for them. Ms. Michael, thank you for nodding.
The concern is, as we look to start secondary at 8:30, right, our ability to then get all of the students to elementary on time by 8:50. So in this potential planning, that extra 10 minutes is really for transportation purposes.
Okay, thank you. And again, I just want to reiterate that, I mean, I've just heard from a lot of parents about the nervousness of their kids being out at unsupervised homes during the secondary early releases.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. I think Dr. Dimick and myself, we'll have a conversation with you offline on that as parents of secondary students. Yes, Dr. Anderson.
Yeah, just to add on to Dr. Dimick's presentation of the Arlington school times, I took a look at the Fairfax elementary start times, and about half of them start at 9:00 or later, and a third start 9:10 or later. So just for kind of context and, you know, kind of what our neighbors are doing.
And their further context, just their middle school start at 7:20, and that's a busing issue.
Thank you, Dr. Nune. Another... Did you... Chair Gold?
Yes. From a procedure standpoint, can we just jump around to different topics? Okay. So I've got two comments. I'll make one after Dr. Ortiz talks. I think it's about the early release... I'm sorry, the start times and the end of school for the secondary campus, if we move the start time later. We did have an all-call in the morning announcements, I think, in the spring to give us a lot of feedback. And I think the summary of that feedback was interesting and expected, but interesting that there was an overwhelming number of people who said we should try to limit the secondary campus to be extended by the amount of time that we would push the start time. And just to summarize for the community, I thought it was interesting, clearly there was a strong athletic push, not just led by our Chair Downs next to me, but by a number of athletic and extracurricular activities for the distances they have to travel. We also heard from a number of after-school community programs, including our Parks and Rec partners, but also our after-school programs. It's said it'd be very difficult to staff and to arrange and to support. And then I think the other large block was the teachers and staff that would have to stay later to support clubs, but also have to get home, and that'd be very challenging. So I just think from... I don't think we heard a number... We heard any support to say, yes, let's just move the later start time at the end of the day. I think there was a significant number of support to try to truncate the day if that's possible. I know logistically that's challenged, but any thoughts on that or reactions?
In all three of these examples, we shifted the secondary start time from 8:00 a.m. to 8:30 as recommended by the American Pediatric Association. But the end time in every one of these examples for secondary was only extended by 10 minutes.
By 10 minutes?
By 10 minutes. So we shift from 3:00 to 3:10.
Okay. And I'm sure talking with our... The athletic community, the extracurricular activity, our Parks and Rec partners, that would be great, that we can do that. And I'll ask my next one.
I think we need to ask those questions a little bit more. It's just part of the conversation, just generally.
Yep.
You know, what we wanted to do is give you some samples.
Great.
Not put one out that was the answer.
Okay. That's great. I fully concur.
You can go ahead.
No, I'll...
Okay. Dr. Ortiz?
Thank you, Chair Downs. I have one question and then just, I think, a few requests, you know, in the sense that this is a process that we're engaging in, that we started in the springtime. The reason, you know, in isolation, you know, like the... I think the person who doesn't know all the details would say, well, you know, this is a small place, you've only got so many buses, why don't you just switch the times? And the reason why is that we have disagreement with Fairfax regarding Mount Daniel and opening them. Two questions. One is, what have we broached this topic with Fairfax?
Sorry. Did you have a follow-up to that also?
Oh, well, so what was... Have we broached... Well, the first question is that we broached it with Fairfax, I think.
We have sidled it and sort of... Meaning that we sort of broached it, and we're sort of told, don't even bring it.
And what's the primary concern?
Mostly, it's the community around Mount Daniel. It is the... That neighborhood association. It was... It's been... I'll just be honest, it's been a very challenging neighborhood for us to do a lot up there, even down to, you know, going back to the renovation of Mount Daniel and then putting in the path that goes from Highland to Mount Daniel. They've challenged us all the way through, and I think that there isn't any appetite to reopen that negotiation from the county side around having more buses up there earlier or later.
Okay. Or the same number of buses earlier. Perhaps we could pull a fini...
Right, right. Thank you. That's a good clarification. Be the same number, just be at a different time.
At different times. Okay. I suppose it would be earlier than later. Okay, so that's one question. And then, actually, there's only one question, and that's a request. So a number of, you know, Loudoun County, at least some of their high schools, of course, it's a very large county, some of their high schools do start later. You know, they have essentially that kind of flip schedule with some of their schools. And, you know, I think it would be useful for us to hear from, and I'm not saying it only has to be Loudoun, but a county that has made this change about the challenges they experience, just generally managing it on a day-to-day basis post-actually doing it, like, okay, how do you manage athletics with having to move some, you know, move children at a different time when your neighboring school divisions don't do it at the same time, for example? What about, you know, commutes and things like that? I think, you know, those are... If we were to make this change, those would be ongoing issues that would have to be managed on a day-to-day basis, right? So I think it'd be helpful for us to hear from somebody who just does this and how they do it. And I think similarly speaking, it would be good to hear from divisions, either together or separately, that have eliminated early release Wednesdays and, you know, how they use that time beforehand, how they manage the process of actually going through that change, and then what their resolution was, right? So I think that's one. And then similarly speaking, with respect to changing secondary start times, like, how did they manage transportation? What were the budget implications for doing so? You know, how did they manage athletics and balance that with other extracurricular activities? How did extracurricular activities move around? You know, I think those are all a set of questions, and if we don't have to learn hard lessons ourself, it's probably really helpful to us to do that. So those are just a couple of requests in addition to, you know, and I think some of this can be... We can take it on as a board to do some of that outreach if we know who to reach out to.
So we can help with that. I can answer this part of your question now, actually, and it's the elimination of the early release Wednesdays. Fairfax County, when several of us were there, had an early release Monday, and we moved away from it. And the way that it was handled was that the time that was lost for professional development in those early release Mondays were added into the schedule as teacher workdays. So, for example, now the county has, I believe, five teacher workdays that were added to the calendar to accommodate for those professional developments. Now, if we were to do anything like that, that would mean, you know, losing five school days in the 180-day calendar that we have. So it would mean extending the school year, and that's what Fairfax County did, is they extended the school year by the subsequent number of days that they added back into those calendars. The challenge for them has been not so much continuity, but discontinuity of when those days sort of crop up, they're unpredictable, and it's hard to link them together from my conversations with them. So you can't link from like one Monday to the next Monday to the next Monday about what it is that you were working on. So that's how they dealt with that. And we are the only school division in Northern Virginia, in our region, that has the early release days. And so Fairfax was the last county, last system to do away with those. So, you know, to try to bring somebody in from there, the good news is, is you got a few people that were there during that period of time. And there were some budget implications at the time as well. There was additional... It was called Triple T, which is Time for Teaching, time given to the schools, meaning elementaries would get more encore time. And the reason that the elementaries needed more encore time was to allow more teachers to have planning time. We've been able to do that currently, but it's a different... It's an apples and oranges because of the way they do it. So, you know, if it's the will of the board to get some information from Loudoun County, for example, and how they deal with the 9:00, 9:00 o'clock starts or whatever, I'm happy to at least ask the question and see if they'll write something to us.
Yes, Ms. Gold?
I think the FAQ idea that you mentioned, kind of approaching a quasi-budget approach, is a helpful one for helping to document the conversations that we're having. I think one of the big lessons learned that we had with the calendar discussion was despite the number of school board meetings we had and discussions, there was a lack of understanding of what was happening. So I think that's a great suggestion. I think also, Ms. Michael, do you mind kind of reviewing the timeline for the public? I know you have the slide up there, but just some thoughts around that, because I think this timeline is a little bit different on how the board has or would be engaging, or how we've engaged in the past, correct? This is a little bit different, or a departure with some of the town halls?
Yes, this is what the board shared at your last meeting earlier in August. And this approach is different from some of the things we've done in the past, in that it does have town halls and town halls that are specific for staff as compared to community members, and you also have them segmented out by level. So this timeline that the board has developed first starts by developing the FAQs that we were talking about earlier this evening, and that the chair and the vice chair would reach out to all of our employee associations. So that includes FCCA, PEAC, CEAC, AEAC, and to work with the staff there to inform them of the timeline and ways that they can provide feedback to the school board, so being very clear with them how they can contribute. In terms of the town halls for employees, we have one at the secondary level, one at Mount Daniel where we would include JTP, and then another one at Oak Street, so you could hear school-specific feedback. October 10th, you had slated a possible updated presentation by the superintendent. Then having town halls for the community and... Then having town halls for the community in mid-October, one or two of them. Um, having another work session in October to discuss the feedback, um, that you've gotten from both the staff and the community. Um, and then in November 14th, I'm holding a vote or working to get board consensus, um, if the school board feels that you have enough information at that point in time, and enough engagement from the staff and community to move forward, and then a potential backup date should more time be needed, could be November 28th.
Okay, so I hopefully, from this perspective, from the timeline, this shows that we're not, we've got a long process, a long on-ramp to try to collect feedback, we're obviously clearly getting feedback, um, as we're presenting, um, which is great, but I think this is, if there's other ideas, or if anyone's watching, which apparently there are a number of people watching right now, if there are other ideas about how to collect feedback, we welcome that. Um, we don't, if we had the decision of what we were doing with all this, we would decide now and save everybody a lot of time, but we really are trying to collect an earnest effort to try to collect feedback from the community, and that involves teachers, staff, parents, after-school partners, uh, coaches, students, so Sean, you've got, you know, a job to do as well, to collect some feedback and be the student voice for this process, it's a good process we're all going through, so, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chigold. Yeah, I think one of the things we didn't touch on this evening is looking at, you know, this, um, I'm speaking more about the early release than, than the start times, but looking at it as a workforce issue. And, um, you know, I know Ms. Additoro, um, our rock star STEAM teacher at Oak Street, sent us a, a letter talking about, one of the reasons she was attracted to the school system was because of early-release Wednesdays, and she would have that extra planning time. And, you know, we know, uh, firsthand how hard it's been to fill vacancies, um, this year, and so I think if that's something that is attractive, uh, to, to attract teachers to come to our school system, it's definitely something that we should think about. Um, Ms. Uh, Michael, could you go back to the, the middle, um, one with the two-ish ones per month?
Semi-monthly?
Yeah, um, so it's just looking, so you, um, so did we, okay, so, I'm looking at November, for example, um, so that one, in, we're only doing the one early release because we've got so many holiday, so it's sort of like you all were just sort of like looking at each month, right, and not...
Correct. One of the things in the calendar discussion was discussions about, um, instructional time and interrupted time, and looking at that. So in this option that we've labeled semi-monthly, we really did look at those months that were really short, being, um, August and June, and then looking at the months that have significant holidays, which were November and December. And in each of those months, um, where we, there had the Thanksgiving break combined with Veterans Day, or the winter break holiday, we only have one early release. The other, um, thing that we did differently on this calendar that I didn't highlight before is when you look at the October early release, and we did tie that early release, the second one, with the two teacher workdays at our conferences, thinking for families that might be easier to have that early release before the two days, um, potentially if they were going out of town or doing something. Again, these were all just examples, they're not in any way set in stone, um, but just, um, calendars that we hope will help, um, the board, um, engage in this process and, and provide us with feedback.
Great, thank you. Yes, Ms. Silverman?
Dr. Noonan, can I ask you, so Fairfax used to have Mondays?
Correct.
Some, I, I kind of think that the only way this works for Foster City is because we are currently the only jurisdiction in the area that has early-release Wednesdays. Um, what did people do when Fairfax was closed early on Mondays, and Foster City was closed on Wednesdays? Like, how did the school, the, the school, you know, many teachers are parents, um, how did they handle that, you know, and if there wasn't enough daycare, or if their child, for social or emotional reasons, couldn't access daycare for, you know, personal reasons, financially they couldn't access childcare, how did that work if Foster City families would have to go pick up their kids early in Fairfax and vice versa?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
And, and the reason I don't know is because it was 186,000 kids, and it wasn't as relational as it is here.
Sure, that, well, you know everybody, that makes sense, okay, thank you. I, um, 'cause I, I do think that one reason why this system works here, um, is, is because we are the only ones, and, and there isn't that logistical juggle that our teacher families have to try to figure out.
I could just tell you, as a graduate of Fairfax County Schools, whose mom worked at Fairfax County Schools, everyone just went home to empty houses. It was the eighties, it was just different. I don't know what they did in recent history.
You know, they, they do have a, a school-age childcare program after school at the elementaries, just like we have a daycare program. Um, I, I don't know that it's any more robust at each school site than ours is. I think one of the things that we, we do have here that I don't recall having in Fairfax County is the addition of a park and rec, um, program. Um, I, I know that, like, the city of Fairfax had a park and rec program, but the county, you know, didn't have anything like that, so there weren't, there weren't options.
Yeah, the hard thing about the park and rec, um, I, I got it, I'm on the waitlist, as I know many other parents are on the waitlist. Um, they have a few kids that they've accepted, I, I think there's a staffing issue, um, and, you know, one of the hard things is, you know, first of all, I do have a child that would not have been able to access, um, a, an after-school program, just for personal reasons, um, and, you know, it's a great thing that I have the financial resources to be able to pay it, but some families might not be able to, um, and you need a car, because there's no busing at four o'clock, you know, for the four o'clock dismissal from, from that program. Um, so, a lot of those, um, factors might prevent, um, a, a child from be able, being able to access those, and to me, that becomes an equity issue as to how we're, we're managing that, and, you know, it, it's not, that can't, that's not the answer for everybody, um, and especially isn't the answer for everybody when there is a waitlist.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you all very much for this presentation, Ms. Michael and, and Dr. Noonan, and we'll, um, of course, as Vice Chigold said, this is just the beginning, and Vice Chigold and I will be working on, uh, putting that timeline into action, and, and thank you again, Dr. Anderson, for helping us, um, with, with that timeline, and, uh, we'll be working on setting up those town halls, and, you know, I encourage staff, uh, you know, whether it's however they feel most comfortable to contact us via email or, um, through the town halls, so definitely, right, and, right, and we will also have, Vice Chigold and I will be resuming our office hours, uh, in another week or two, so we'll be putting the information out about that, so. All right, thank you very much for the good discussion. Let's see now, we are going to, we're now at 3.01, and we're gonna go into closed. Uh, if someone could read us into closed, please. Yes, Vice Chigold?
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, performance of a specific staff member, and legal matters under Section 2.2-3711A8, in particular, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters regarding the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Thank you, could I have a second? Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. All those in favor say yes? Yes? All those opposed say no? Thank you, we'll move into closed, and this is basically the end of our meeting, um, probably 20-minute closed session, and then we'll, we'll be finishing out the meeting?
I'm hopeful for a 20-minute session.
Okay, um, but then we'll...
But yeah, we'll, we'll just come in and close our meeting out.
Yeah, then we, we...
So we're gonna stop broadcasting at this point.
Right, for the sake of the public, we'll, we'll be, we'll go straight out of closed and, and then, uh, adjourn, so this will be the end of the public portion of the meeting.
Perfect.
Thank you.